Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 Southeastern Regional School Committee meeting. And let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have a moment of silence, please. You may be seated. Welcome, everyone. Guests can follow votes using the link on Southeastern School Committee website or watch live on our Facebook page. We're also recording this meeting. And first up on the agenda is the report from the student representative, and Adriana.
So, as the school year has planned, it's amazing how much has already happened in two months. Term one has officially ended, and especially the seniors are busy with college application and industry credentials. There's a mix of excitement and nerves, as everybody thinks about the future, whether it's college, whether it's going into the field, whatever you need, you want to be in. November kicks off with a Family Fun Day on November 2nd, organized by Skills USA. The event brought the community together and featured a car show, music, crafts, food trucks, and raffles. It was a great day for families to enjoy the time together, and the turnout showed just how strong and supportive the community is. People of all ages had a blast, and the event was a wonderful way to celebrate fall, always the school spirit. Including a good friend of mine, Ivan, being pied in the base. Fall sports have also been a huge part of the excitement. Both the boys' and girls' soccer team had a fantastic season, both making it to, I believe it was states, states or regionals. Language skill and teamwork that made everybody proud. School spirit has been incredible, with lots of fans cheering everybody on. The buzz around the powder club football game between the senior and junior girls and the interesting cheer routine to come is huge. It's a fun, but it's an intense tradition, and everyone is practicing hard to make the Pep Valley an unforgettable event. It'll also bring a chance to bring the whole school together and celebrate all of fall's achievements, also highlighting the assembly we had, I believe it was last week, acknowledging those who got honors, high honor roll, and yeah. November is men's mental health awareness day. And our school's supporting it quite uniquely. Students and staff are being encouraged to grow their facial hair or beards, to raise awareness about men's mental health and well-being. It's important to start conversations and supporting one another and breaking down stigmas around mental health. Another special addition to this month is that every Wednesday will now be HOP Friday, so wear white and blue or any HOP gear that anybody may own. And last, but certainly not least, I am really excited to highlight a new student-led podcast created by Zachary Wright, Jerai Donaldson, and Julius De Oliveira. The podcast is called Voices of the Future. It's all about connecting students and teachers through real conversations. They share their life experiences and talk about how their values and decisions have shaped who they are, while teachers and staff, or any guest that is invited onto the podcast, speak about where they are today and what led them to where they are today. The Secretary of Education was also invited to be a special guest on episode at the request of the three boys. It's a space for learning, asking questions, and gaining insights, helping everyone grow and better understand each other. Students and staff are encouraged to reach out to any of the boys, Zachary, Jerai, or Julius, for more information. It's really just a safe space for anybody to talk about whatever's on their mind, whatever's current, whatever they feel that they can't really speak to maybe their parents, or maybe they just want insight on a certain situation. The boys created this podcast, and I believe they're on episode three-ish. They're finishing up the previous episodes, which will be sent out soon, I believe. But I'm really proud to say that my friends have created a safe space for people to talk about their feelings, to talk about what they feel, as if not everybody would be comfortable talking about. And they're inviting anybody and everybody to either sit in or be on it and give their insight. But all in all, looking back at the year so far, we've accomplished a lot. A lot has happened, and there are so many more achievements and accomplishments to come. But excited to keep this year going and see how it all works out.
Thank you so much for your report. I had the opportunity to listen to that first podcast with Secretary Tuttweiler, and it was just fantastic. So I encourage anybody who hasn't had a chance to listen to the podcast to just tune in. I think it's just a really great initiative that they started. All right, next up is Audiences and Communications.
All right, so this evening, I would like to welcome a special guest, Jessica Aldrich from West Bridgewater. So we are still awaiting official results from the election, but at this point, Jessica does appear to have quite the lead, so we hope to welcome her officially as a school committee member in December. So thank you for being here as our special guest this evening.
Any other announcements? Next up is the Plumbing Field Trip to Nashua.
All right, so earlier in the year, we asked the school committee to approve all non-overnight field trips within the six New England states, but we did say as part of that that we would still keep you informed anytime a field trip was going our state. So this is to let you know that the plumbing shop is going to Nashua, New Hampshire on December 2nd. It's not overnight, so that is just for your information.
Great, thank you for that. Next up is announcements, some public announcements, and conferences, conventions, and meetings.
So you can see all of those coming up. It's going to become, it's going to be quite a busy year, a couple of months. Just a note, and I'll talk about this a little bit more later on, that the holiday dinner for school committee is December the 10th at 5:00, and that will be followed by regular school committee meeting.
Okay, and then moving on to FYI news articles.
Yep, there's some news articles there for you to review at your leisure.
Okay, and we are now at five consent agenda, and I would actually like to pull out Five J., which is the donation of Nissan cars for Southeastern Regional. And the reason why I'm doing that is there is a donation acceptance as part of that. However, there is a transportation cost, so I did want to highlight that before we go in and do the rest.
And just to clarify, the department did budget for, and we have included in our budget over $20,000 for them to purchase new vehicles for this year. However, they were able to get these two donated vehicles, and we just need to pay the transportation cost, so those costs will come out of that budgeted line item for new vehicles.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna move to approve the, actually, I'll do, I'll move with unanimous consent to approve the consent agenda. If there's no objections, it is approved. Madam Chair?
Yep, so moved. And we have a lot of people to thank here, because we are approving tons of donations. So I did want to acknowledge all the people who have given us donations. So one of them was a variety of hair color from Paul Joseph's Image Salon of Northeastern. We accepted the donation of a large propane tank from Caravan Lane of Needham. We received a donation of $2,000, $2,005 Dunkin' Donuts gift cards from Erica Yurk. We received donations of clothing articles for the career closet. And then we also received a donation of five computer keyboards from Cheryl Fernandes of East Bridgewater for NG gearing. We received the donation of these Nissan cars that we're transporting back. So a lot of great donations. Thank you, everyone, for your generosity with those.
We'll make sure we send it up for you.
Yes, definitely. All right, moving on to item number six, which is our financial report and our treasurer's cash report.
Hello. So this is the cash reports and reconciliations.
Oh, so it was, yeah, yeah. I didn't hear it put it back. Sorry.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
This is the cash report with reconciliations through September 30th. You see on the first page is the summary of financial position and the graph form, and the next page is the documentation of that with receipts of $1,008,000. Payroll and other expenditures of $3.4 million, with a total cash balance at the end of the month of $13.7 million. The next page is the budget to actual revenue. The assessments from the cities and towns were not due in October, so there's nothing reflected there. They'll come in December 1st on schedule, and let me tell you what to say about that. The summary and gross pay summary report is next. The total payrolls through October 19th is actually $7.1 million, the breakdown of salaries and hourly employees. The cash reconciliation page is in pretty good shape. It's actually just really outstanding checks for the three different operating accounts and a couple of other month-end adjustments for the mass teachers' retirement and a couple of other things, but nothing outstanding there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Kim, just one quick question. Madam Chair, may I?
Sure.
Just one quick question. Did someone go up to the research or the variance, whatever that thing is?
Hello, the variance being researched.
Yeah, what's that all about?
Well, that's what it comes down to when all of my outstanding items here don't quite add up to the variance between my bank balances and the general ledger balances. So that number fluctuates from month to month, and it's something that's being researched through the GL. It'll probably clear itself out within the month.
Gotcha.
It kind of floats every month, just so everything summarizes back to that 598, or totals back to the 598, I should say. So like the $154 of the payroll account down there, the ACH is in transit. That was the mass teachers' payment, probably of about $110,000, $115,000, and a couple of other things that get paid right on the first of the following month.
I appreciate you, thank you.
Yeah, for lack of better, it's just more of a timing issue.
Yeah, I was wondering that.
Because the bank and the financial system, so we have warrants against a month into August 1st, from July 31st, or vice versa, you'll see those things clear up in the following months.
Mark, I appreciate you all, thank you.
Any further questions for Karen? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved to accept the treasurer's report.
Do you have a second? Any further discussion? If not, we'll bring it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Thank you. Next up is the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration's report.
Good evening. So you'll find our appropriated budget. So here we are, it's our fourth month of the school year now. If you look at the very end, you'll see we're at 68% of our budget is still available, so we're in good shape, running as expected. Again, you'll see some things, you know, we're starting to see a few items, some offices will be needed, but those will be coming up usually December, January, those will come out for you to approve. I'll have those for you. But yeah, at this point, we're running as expected. You know, we've had some things come up as the cars, you know, we'll save a few dollars there, we'll be able to offset that to other items needed. You know, we've had some other costs come up that were unanticipated with the STEM project, so again, all those things offset each other pretty much, but yeah, at this point, we're running as expected. So if there are any questions there, I can help facilitate.
Any questions for Mark?
And then we also have our revolving funds. So again, these carry from one year to the next. Again, I know you may be alarmed, there's a negative 372 down towards the bottom there in the TI, but that's just one program, so these run in a group. It was a tuition for the TI, so if you take all the TI accounts, they're over $2 million in the black, but that's just to break out each program individually, so we can see how they're running year to year, from month to month, so we break those up individually.
That's a huge number, Mark. It's a scary number, but we get it.
No, no, but you take all the TI accounts, if you added those all up, you'd be in the positive. We've done this to help Pat when she looks at her programs to see where we're at.
Is that just one program, or is that?
So that's the center account. So what happens is a lot of the revenue gets broken up into the different programs themselves, and then a lot of the costs get charged to the center account. So you see the costs there, but the revenue in different account lines. So if you were to take an example up above 803, the TI medical nursing, there's 803,000 there. So the revenue comes into each program individually, but then we put all the expenses at one TI institute center account.
Any more questions for Mark? All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the ratification of payroll warrants. We could do, see, two at one time. We have the October 10th, 2024 warrant, and the October 24th, 2024 warrant.
Can I just ask a question?
Of course.
I don't know if this is like a logistical error, but on the, where did it just go? On the vouchers, it has Mindy's name still on it, and I don't know if that's an issue. So if you click on the vouchers, it says like, Holly, it's Mindy, Robin, Tony.
Yeah, so she is still on officially, yeah, until a new person is born.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure that we didn't.
Yep, thank you, yep.
Madam Chair, I'm moved to approve ratification with respect to the financial report seen date as one.
Okay, can I get a second? All right, any further discussion? If not, let's bring it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, recusals. One recusal, so motion passes, seven ayes and one recusal. Thank you. All right, next up is old business, which is not old, but continuing, which is our STEM building update. And we have Chair Heath.
Things are moving along. Trying to make up some ground on some time that we lost out there. The steel panels should be going up next week, I believe, the schedule come in. There's been a few issues. There was a small piece of the roof that got missed on the architecture, so they're redoing that and coming up with costs on that, and I don't get the roof visiting yet. So it's kind of stalled there a little bit, but the slab is full, steel is up, welds are done, all signed off, curtain wall is going up, that's going to be all set. So we are trying to catch up, it's just been a few challenges.
When's the expected completion date if we can't catch up?
They are hoping for February at this point, I think it goes out to. For the contractors and all of them will be offsite at that point, and then it's our days. So that's when the funds will really start. And Holly and I have spoken, we probably have to do an internal building committee meeting about the equipment and stuff and start that conversation.
To do all the coordination, yeah.
Without all the architects and, you know, all them here, we don't need them for that. So we'll try to schedule that sometime, probably in January, I would imagine.
Before then.
Before then? We don't have much time. Months are clicking by, so. Put that one on your docket, Christine.
These meetings.
Is the summer ending Thursday, is that an in-person?
This week is in person. This week is in person.
Great. Any questions for Andy? Yes?
So you said about the roof?
The roof, there's a, if you look at the building out there, where I always call it diesel, will always be diesel, so forget me. It goes straight down, then it jogs in and comes out, well, the architects missed the jog in, so when they put the steel frame up, there's now no roof over that.
It's like a sunroof.
Yeah. So some light steel work, and then some light gate steel on the top bit, tie it all in, and then the roof will go over with roll down.
So there'll be extra costs up, or there, because it's a mistake.
So we'll be in conversation with.
That is the conversation we're going to have.
Exciting.
But aside from that, we're on budget?
So far, so good.
I had to ask a difficult question.
We've had some unexpected costs associated with the ground.
Right.
We've also had some credits for some things, so, you know, we're.
It'll all work out, and the end will be okay.
As Mark says, it will balance out.
That's right.
We have some contingency at the front. Sometimes we just like to make my sweat a little bit.
Thank goodness for Mark, right? Excellent. Well, thank you so much for letting me. All right, moving on to new business. Finally, we have a superintendent's evaluation. Thank you so much, Holly, for your patience as we put one together. So I just wanted to go over it generally. It is posted on board docs, and it will be made public after this meeting. So basically, we took the following approach. We looked at your overall strengths and areas for development. We provided grades on the same indicators that we evaluated you on in the last cycle. But what we did was, this time, we moved to a standard four-value scoring system that was consistent with what the rubric was before we evaluated you on two values instead of four. So we moved over to the four-value scoring system, and then we also talked about whether we wanted to add any indicators, and we just decided to stick with what we had. And then what we did was, we looked at the goals that we had identified last year, checked to see your progress against those goals, and then we identified goals to guide you for this academic year. Overall, you know, we, I think it's a solid evaluation. We just really appreciate your ambition, your dedication to our district, to carrying out Southeastern's mission, and we appreciate your thoughtfulness in providing data-informed presentations. Some of the things that we did talk about, that I just wanted to highlight with the indicators, had to do with cultural proficiency when it comes to communications. We did give you some, we gave you a goal that's related to that. You know, I think that we, as a district, have made some efforts to provide culturally proficient communication, but there's always room for improvement, so I'm just hopeful that we'll continue to make steady progress towards that, and made some suggestions there. And then when we were looking at your goals for the last academic year, one of them was 2% in student growth improvement in ELA and math for the students with disabilities, ELL students, and Hispanic Latin A students. We're just really thrilled with the tremendous progress that our district had made, increasing MCAS scores and our overall growth, and we hope to continue that growth. The other goal was to hire a consulting firm to do the district equity audit, which happened. We also had a goal about accurately reporting student behavior incidents and also providing quarterly reports on student behavior overall, and we believe that that was partially met because there was tremendous progress made, but the reporting aspect could be improved. So that's something that we'd like to see in this year. Number four was maintain or improve co-op numbers for the year and conduct a survey for our co-op employers for students as compared to identify the skill levels of co-op students versus employer expectations. We also found that was partially met. We see strong co-op numbers still, but we would like to see a survey done and rolled out so that we can understand how our students' skill levels compare to employer expectations. And then the last one in that series was to continue with a new superintendent program, which you obviously have met. So for proposed goals for this year, I know that you had set some goals to be able to guide your team along for this year. Some of these things are complementary to your goals. Some of these might be in addition. Our first one was to increase co-op placement by 2% overall, and then present co-op placement data, which is what we're hoping to do quarterly for that, and also for behavior as well, so provide quarterly reports on school discipline. And then for MCAS, we want to have an MCAS goal, maintain the MCAS growth percentages in the same areas that we had identified in the previous year. Number four, which is what I had alluded to previously, improve language access for students and families for highly attended engagement events. Some of the ones that we identified were open house, freshman caregiver orientation, expectation night. We said that at minimum. We're hoping that it's much more than that, but at minimum, we're hoping to see that improved language access. And then number five, what I'd like to see is maybe some proposed goals around communication. And when we talk about communication, I kind of have seen themes across different subsets of our population, so I see communication amongst, with the school committee, I see communication within the district, I see communication also with our families, and it's tough because we're very siloed. But I want to try to figure out a way, and I want to challenge you to figure out a goal that might help us do a better job of communicating, because I think that that's something that we'd all like to see improved. And that is also an area where we can continuously improve as well. And then our areas of development, like last year, communication, specifically with school committee. School committee members are looking for more consistent communication. And then another one had to do with delegating tasks, and we'd love to see you do more of that, which I know is tough.
So you're that team?
So those were the two major areas for development that we'd like to see you work on for this year. But it's been such a pleasure collaborating with you. I mean, there have been challenges this year, but, you know, I think you have a really great team of people around you. You know, obviously, under your leadership, we've come to do some phenomenal things, but I also know that it takes a team to be able to do that, and you just have a lot of wonderful staff around you, helping you, and really providing their expertise, so I'm very thankful for that as well.
Thank you.
So I want to thank you for a great year.
Thank you, and thank you for this very thorough and thoughtful and clear evaluation. I appreciate the time you took on this. I appreciate the collaborative relationship that we have between myself and the school committee. I appreciate all the hard work that you do to support me and to support our administrators, our faculty, and our staff, and that's very clear. And I think, as you said, communication is something that we can almost always do better, so I certainly welcome that goal that we've challenged for this year. And I do have a great team, and I'm very, very lucky. Some of them are here today, Jared, and Christina, and Rob, and Mark, and Pat, and Karen, and so I'm very, very pleased and lucky to have a team of subject matter experts, but also people who are just really good people who are here doing the right thing. So we're excited for the year to come, and excited to work towards ensuring that every student, every staff member, every person, member of our community can be the very best that they can be, and that they know that they are seen, that they are valued, that they are respected, and that we will not give up until the work is done. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So next up on the agenda is the principal search. I asked Superintendent McLannan if she could just give us an overview of what's yet to come with searching for our new principal for the high school.
As you know, last spring, we conducted a principal search, and at the end of that search, I did not feel confident that we had identified a strong candidate for this school year. And so at that time, it was my pleasure to appoint Christina Barbini as the acting principal for this school year. At that time, we did let folks know that we would begin a search for a permanent principal in this fall, or late fall, early winter. So I just wanted to update you on where we are. In the next, before the end of this week, we're going to be sending out a pre-search survey to our faculty and staff. We want to ask them in particular, what are the characteristics that they are really looking for, that are most important to them? that they are really looking for that are most important to them in a principal? They're also going to have the opportunity to propose interview questions or tell us anything else that they would like us to know or consider throughout the hiring process. The first round of interviews, we're going to have high school and district administrators as well as the president of the federation or designate of his choosing to be involved in first-round interviews with everyone who has been pre-qualified. So through our HR department, we're going to screen applicants, make sure they meet the minimum qualifications. Anyone who meets the minimum qualifications should have an opportunity to interview. And at the end of that first round, we'll be asking them to forward three to six candidates for second-round interviews. At that point, the vice principals will be involved in interviewing. I think this is really important. The vice principals are the people who work most closely with the principal. And so their ability to interview and ask some really in-depth questions about the day-to-day operations of the school will be very important.
Would you be able to identify who the vice principals are for those who might not know who they are?
Vice Principal of Student Support Services, Dr. Shanna Howell, and Vice Principal of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Katie Tuchanardi. And then all administrators will have input into this process. I just want to give them, because of the way that they work with the principal, sort of an opportunity to have their own round of interviews. And then the third round will also be sort of like we did the last time. We will invite three candidates, three finalists, to meet with our staff and have some. At that point, I'll do my one-on-one interview, but they'll have an opportunity to meet with students, with faculty, with staff, with community stakeholders. I think it's very important that we're able to see how they actually interact with people in the community, how they interact with students. And then I'm assuming that we will have external finalists. I believe we're going to have internal and external candidates for this position. If there are external finalists, I may be able to schedule campus visits to see how they are received at their schools as well. So that gets a little tricky if people are not being heard as public about applying for other positions, for this position. So our timeline is the job will be posted before Thanksgiving. We're going to advertise it obviously on School Spring and Mava, but I'm also working, I'll work with Rob on where we can post it externally to make sure that we are reaching the broadest possible applicant pool. First-round interviews, we would expect to be done at the beginning of January. Second round, middle to end of January. Ideally, we would have final rounds by February break so that we can make a decision. It's important for us to make decisions by that time period because if we're hiring somebody externally, they have a note, probably have to give notice to their school district and things like that. So if we hire somebody from within, they may have to, we may have to backfill that position. So I think it's important that we have that decision done by mid to late February.
So I have a question for Rob. Now, I'm assuming that we're going to get a number of candidates. And so kind of what sorts of things do you have in place to ensure consistency across interviewing so many folks?
So there's a rubric that's designed in any of our search committee that we have is a matrix. The matrix will incorporate many different components based off of what the job description is. And so that way, we're fairly assessing the individuals that are coming in. So it's not based off of feel, it's based off of credentials that are there. Because a lot of times, individuals could look at a resume and easily put that to the side. I am equity-trained, so this is why it's coming through equity. How is it called? It's not equity-trained. I'm losing the train of thought, but it is. We are equity reps that are, so it looks over the applications to make sure everything is vetted through. Myself, the HR department, we will sit down and kind of go through each, every one of them, put them through the matrix so that way everyone is scored fairly. Once all of those are there, then we can absolutely look at it as we forward the people for, the individuals forward to be interviewed by the committees.
Right. So I totally understand kind of the thought process behind having a matrix and making sure you're evaluating each candidate fairly in that way. How do you assess for fit? Or do you not assess for fit in that first round because you're using that matrix?
So honestly, because when you're looking at it and you're looking just at the application, fit is tough without the actual interview. So when, so as we're getting all the applications from either School Spring or wherever we're receiving it from, teacher's lounge or any other area, fit is something that we're just looking at, as long as they have their credentials that are there. Fit really happens to be the personality that they bring into the room as they're being interviewed when amongst their colleagues and, you know, are looking at the individuals and kind of going back and forth with them. So it wouldn't be through myself looking at fit. Fit would be more of what's happening in real time as they're interviewing.
Okay, so then as it moves forward in the process, are there different matrices that people use for that? Like how do you?
Yeah, absolutely. So when they are, so let's say, for instance, if a student, if a group of administrators are meeting with that individual, they will have their set of questions and evaluations that they can base off of the person's questions, how they present, what they're stating in there, so they can kind of assess. And then that will then go to, and then same thing when they meet with students, when they meet with the principals, each group will have their own set and they will be able to assess the interview process and the interviewees' questions and answers.
Okay. And then one last question. I promise I'll leave you alone. So I mean, we're going to expect internal candidates, right? We want to create a pipeline where people can be promoted from within and grow here at Southeastern. And what does, how do you, how do you balance that, I guess, is my question, right? Because we want to have internal candidates, but we also want to make sure that we're having the right fit of candidates coming through. And how do you evaluate that part?
Upward ability is extremely important in retention when we're looking at, when we're looking at our candidates. If they meet their requirements to be interviewed, we should interview our people. Once they are in there, the one thing I speak with our committees often is to evaluate the individuals based in the space. A lot of times, it goes a little twofold because sometimes we bring bias into an interview based off of, we might have had one experience or something of that nature. So we try to really coach the individuals to not, you know, to, that's part of, it's human nature. It's going to happen. But to make sure that they're following everything and they're fit and they're grading fairly and they're assessing fairly. The other piece is that we encourage our candidates to also know that when you're walking into an interview, not to assume that the people in the room know everything about you just because you've been somewhere for X amount of time. So really, kind of being a little bit, you know, having understanding that you're interviewed for a position and you have to really, you know, sell yourself as if no one in this room knows the work that you've done. So it's difficult. It's not easy because there is a lot of variables that come into it. It's human nature to do things. You know, sometimes someone wear, you know, a color or something like, you know, that's just something like, oh, I don't like that person's shirt today or whatever it may be, right? We try to really coach people to not do that. So what I try to do for my positionality is to meet with groups prior to the interviews and to make sure that we understand when we're asking questions, we are very, we be asking the same questions. If we're asking a follow-up, to make sure that that is going to be fair and equitable for the next candidate, that we're not leading because those type of things will be really, to be very specific to what we're doing. So that way, we're not leading the group to unfairness or something that may be inequitable long-term for that candidate.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
How many high school and district administrators are going to be interviewing this person in like a group session, I guess?
So it all depends. We don't know how many people are going to be internally. So that can vary. Right now, with the principals, we have the two principals. We do have a few others at Superintendent McLennan. We've been looking to see what grouping they would be in, but everybody will have an opportunity. If you are interviewing for it, then you would be recruited from that.
So are you having, if you have multiple candidates, you're going to have different groups of administrators kind of interviewing, or is it going to be like one solid group of administrators?
One solid.
And then it's just going to be like a handful, or is it going to be? I'm just worried about like intimidation factors when you're bringing candidates externally at least for.
Yeah, and one of the, and that's a good point. One of the things that I had talked about was, you know, we have the two vice principals, but then we have two directors, the director of guidance and the director of special ed. Do we have those four interview as a group? So we don't have that kind of, but I think we just have to wait and see if within our administrative team, are there people who are going to apply? Because that will bring the number.
Right, so outside of the vice principals, we're not including those, but we still will have enough people to go and do it and it still will not be like overwhelming.
It depends on when you, usually when you have a group, you're usually anywhere from five to six individuals. That would be solid. Sometimes it can, for bigger searches that I've been a part of in years, it can be a little bit more than that. It all, it all, it all depends. Like again, we don't know who's applying. We don't want to, we don't want to assign it to anybody right now. If they do apply, or they haven't, or they're thinking about it, we don't want to deter them from applying. So then that's what we're going to figure out.
Could there be a potential to have too many cooks in the kitchen, like kind of in the bottom levels? Like in the first rounds before it kind of gets up, too many people? Like you want to have good representation, but at the same time, it comes at a cost sometimes when you have too many, too much input.
So what we're doing, that's a little bit different from our normal search process here, is we're going to have the HR department vet through the initial applications, get them through the, get them through the matrix, have our recommendations there, forward it to the group. So that way, it's not one big group to forwarding it to another group where there'd be too many cooks in the kitchen as you're mentioning. From that standpoint, the group itself that, for that initial will end up being, you know, so it already had been vetted through us. We would then send forward everything to that group, which will be about, again, a number of six, sixes, six to eight individuals in that space. So that would be there. And that's pretty solid.
Yeah.
If you look at any big organizations, schools, that's generally where it's at and we're very consistent with that number. So that's what we'll do.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any more questions?
Yeah, I just, so, I know you are. I'm not being negative, so let me put that out there. But I guess what I'm trying, so we all support community involvement in the process and this is specific to this hiring process. When I talk about community, talking about the administrators that are here, the students, et cetera. But at the end of the day, the person reports to the superintendent. And when I look at this process, I was just thinking about too many cooks in the kitchen. It's, are we taking, and Holly, I know you support this, but isn't this kind of like?
So we have some checks and balances this time. So for example, before candidates go to the first round, I will have vetted that, yes, they meet all the minimum requirements. Like their HR, DEI, myself, these people meet all the minimum requirements. There you go. It's not that I'm, I'm not taking myself out of this process. I just want to make sure that the people who are going to work with the principal, the person, the people that are going to be directed by the principal have an opportunity to weigh in. But I'm not taking myself out of this process. I may actually sit in on all the interviews.
Right, I was wondering that because the way this reads to me is like your responsibility in terms of making this decision has really been watered down.
And it is my decision. I want to make that very clear. Like it is my decision, but it has to be a decision that's informed by how the administrators feel, how our students feel. And like, and that was really what drove my decision the last time is the feedback that I got from students, the feedback that I got from teachers, the written feedback, the feedback that I got from my administrators was there was no clear consensus and I didn't feel comfortable. So, but yes, it is, it is my decision. I'm not taking myself out of this process, but it's important that everybody has a chance to weigh in.
And you're also going to be involved in the process, in the vetting process. It's not that you're just going to be interviewing the finalists and that it, that's it. Okay.
Yeah, in a way, and she's, so if you look at the initials, she'll be involved in that. And then when you look at the second round, you'll probably be involved in that with the vice principals. That'll probably be, that's, in a perfect world, it should be part of that.
Right.
And then on the third round, then you'll have the one-on-one as well. So it should be part of many interviews plus the vetting process. So she'll be in there a lot. It just doesn't spell it out exactly where, every single.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And more questions, comments? Well, thank you for explaining this stuff. I think it's very helpful for all of us to know what this process is going to look like and what to expect. Okay, next up, I love this. Disclosure for school committee December dinner. It sounds so mysterious. I don't even know if school committee members know what this is.
I want to know.
So for our school committee, I'm not going to tell you exactly what they're serving because they like it to be a little bit of a surprise, but they are making a meal that requires the use of wine in cooking. The alcohol will cook out. So there's, it's, but I need to purchase, I need, I need to use school funds to purchase wine for the purposes of cooking. So this is a disclosure to let you know that if you see a case of wine on your credit card statement, that I haven't lost my mind. Yeah, nothing nefarious is going on. So I just, just to do full transparency, I wanted to let you know that we are going to use school funds and the chefs told me that if you don't use the real wine, the taste just isn't as good. The alcohol will all cook out.
All right.
I wonder if we're worried about that. Yeah. Who's doing the cooking, I guess?
Is it Chef Peterson?
Chef, Tess here. I'll keep an eye on that.
We don't lose it all. Question number one.
I'm going to be there while they cook, but then I just.
But are students, students are not going to be handling that portion of the cooking? Or are we going to teach, are they going to learn some of that?
They have used wine in cooking before. Yeah, it's not, it's not unusual. Yeah, they're supervised.
Is it just a cooking wine or is it, what are they asking for? I don't know if it matters.
Yeah, then you'll know what it is.
Right, I'm trying, guys.
So.
Sorry, it's the special meal.
It is, it is.
Okay, next up is advertising and S-PAC play bills.
So when we get to the subcommittee discussions later, we're going to talk about the policy where we have a policy that limits publishing of advertisements in school publications. So out of refundance precaution, we're asking you to approve the use of advertising in our S-PAC theater play bills because they do sell advertising to raise money. And so.
And they also support the places that give donations. And it's very important to recognize the donations in the game.
That's right.
Move to approve the use of advertising in Southeastern's S-PAC theater bills in order to fundraise for the participants and performances.
All right, any further discussion? If not, let's bring it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Eyes have it, eight to zero. Thank you. And then moving on to our unofficial election results.
So I'm not going to go through all of these, but the election results are still unofficial. We are still waiting for, in particular, the count from Sharon. There were some write-in votes. There's no candidate on the ballot. But we do know that Sharon had write-ins and other towns also had write-in votes for the Sharon rep. So I'm sure that they are looking at counting them and making sure that the writing candidate actually resides in Sharon.
Do you have to get certain votes as a writing candidate?
More than ever.
More than the others.
Well, and then there's a minimum, there's a minimum for them to even count.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, it's very small. But, yep. And also a reminder to folks, once the votes are certified, make sure that you get sworn in before the next meeting.
Can we make a point to let our communities know that they vote on every single person sitting at this table and not just their representative?
There's so many people that do that.
I know.
I know, we try like at every big event, I always try and see.
Can these are your school committee reps that represent all of you?
I think it says it on the directions.
Right. Okay, so we're moving on now. Okay, so we're moving on now to the integrated monitoring review of Southeastern Regional.
So this is a required notice to our school committee. And we send this notice out to all of our, our, it's posted on our website. It's available in all of our major languages. And this is a regular, regularly conducted monitoring review of our special education services in particular. So they'll be here this week. They'll be doing interviews, they'll be reviewing documents. They may reach out to parents and caregivers, just sort of randomly based on what they're seeing in our document process. And then they'll produce a report.
Now, have they met with CPAC yet? Because I know that's usually required.
I think they're going, I, I don't think they have yet. No, I don't think they have.
So any questions on this? This is a group B review too. So what is it, three years ago they did group A?
Yeah.
And then they, they flip it every three years? Sounds good. Next up is the report of the committees. My report is very short. I believe it's in our best interest not to meet on the fourth Tuesday of November and December, unless people really want to do that. So what I'm going to do is defer subcommittee meetings that are going to be scheduled on the fourth week to January, where we're going to do athletics and then people and culture. We will find a place for policy because the other thing that we were discussing was bringing in the, bringing in the students who had presented on AI to figure out what our AI policy should be. So it'd be a good time to, to speak with them and have, and challenge them with crafting a policy that we might want to tailor and adopt. So that, that's to be continued.
For the policy meetings, huh?
Yeah, when we do the policy, but the policy meeting has not been scheduled. It will be after the new year. And I think everything else that I could talk about will probably be covered in our legislative liaison's report because there was an MCAS ballot question.
Really? Oh, yeah, oh.
Yes, that one.
Yes. Okay.
All right, so on to our legislative liaison's report.
Before I begin my report, I just want to mention that in discussion with many of the people at the conference, we decided we would like the chef from Southeastern Regional to be engaged to cook for us the next year. We don't know if that's possible, but that may not be. So last week, together with Robin and Jerson, we attended the MAS C mess joint conference in Hyannis. It began the day after the election. So there was much discussion as you can imagine. But one of the featured speakers was Tim Schreiber. Now, Tim Schreiber is an educator, but you might remember his father Sergeant Schreiber and his mother, Eunice Kennedy. Eunice Kennedy was founder of the Special Olympics. And if you saw Tim, right away you would say, that's a Kennedy. He looked just like them. And in fact, he referenced the fact that he was often mistaken for a Kennedy. And sometimes it would be a good thing, receiving positive results and sometimes negative. But his presentation really, I thought, was very good to begin the day after the election. And I gave out the dignity index, I think, that some of you have. And his presentation was about dignity and the dignity index, which really spoke to many of us in the audience. Now, the highest level of, if you have the paper, the dignity index, and I quote, "Each one of us is born with inherent worth, so we treat everyone with dignity no matter what." And I think that's something we can all benefit from.
Barbara, could you, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you explain what the dignity index is for folks who might not have this piece of paper?
Sure. It's really for people to be able to hear the other side. Often, we tend to listen only to what we want to hear. But it's necessary to hear the other side. And it's not, it's in all relationships. He said, between husband and wife, sometimes you have conflict. But you have to listen to what your spouse says and be able to work with that person in a positive way. The same thing, classmate to classmate, teacher and student, school committee members and others in our life. So that, and that's not an easy thing to do sometimes. I don't know how people feel. Who has difficulty sometimes speaking to people that are so different from us?
We're not going to answer that publicly.
Good question. Trying to goad us into the lounge.
Well, it's true, but you know, I, I think here at Southeastern, from what I'm hearing from the teachers and others, there, there's a definite looking, and it happens in what we're talking about in people and culture or whatever, to really understand others coming from a different place. So, and we must treat everyone with dignity. And that, and these, the index, you know, it goes from one to eight. So eight was the highest level. One was not, not something that we want to even think about. One is, they're not even human. It's our moral duty to destroy them before they destroy us. So obviously, this is something that we want to steer away from. So we, hopefully we don't start from one. I mean, we probably are all start from somewhere in the middle. And the highest point is what, what I just talked about in eight. So we need to fully engage with people, discuss values and interests and share and, and admit. This is very hard. It's hard to admit, maybe I was wrong. Maybe what I was thinking isn't true. And I think at that point, that opens up the conversation. Now you can talk to that other person. And that person might say back to you, you know, I was feeling kind of the same way, but now I'm looking at you in a different way. So, you know, and these are not things that are easy to do. Anyone who deals with any kind of conflict or difference in opinion understands that it's difficult. And I, I think we all know that our, our country has been very polarized. And sometimes we have difficulty understanding that. This is a time in the country that, at least for me, that I haven't, I don't remember anything quite like this. But, and that's important to think about this because we, we really don't want to think of other people as the other. And we, we talk about that here. We want everyone to belong. We want people to feel good. So that's what I kind of am taking away from that. So there were two major issues that we were interested in that were discussed at the conference. Of course, ballot question two, which states, of course, that elimination of MCAS as a high school graduation requirement. The voters said yes overwhelmingly. And the MTA, the Massachusetts Teachers Association, the MAS C, the Massachusetts School Committees, they were very much for a yes on question two. And Robert and I talked with Glenn Kuter. He was the, he's the executive director of MAS C. And he was very elated at the fact that people voted yes. And also, you know, there's a lot been written about. There, there's, you know, I, I've got a lot of material on who's saying what. The people I know were Mara Healy, the Secretary of Education, who I hope, I was actually here when he visited, and he, he was very impressed with the fact that we have diversity and so forth. And we hope that he's somebody that can be an advocate for us. The business community was a no, and the superintendents were a no, not Holly, but.
Mass Association School Superintendent.
The superintendents, and I did speak to one of them, and she didn't want to be quoted. On the national scene, and I'm kind of too much to talk about this, but people were talking about it. So I will mention it very quickly. There were people concerned that there was a pledge from the president-elect to dismantle the Department of Education. And that may not happen, so I think we don't need to spend too much time on that. But we all know Title I gives state and local funding for schools serving low-income families and other Pell Grant and many other things. So we're, I'm hoping that that will not be a priority. There are so many other things that may be focused on, so we won't worry about that right now. And then our major issue that we face was discussed at length at the Division Eight meeting that was really highly attended. There wasn't a seat to be had there. And this issue continues to be an uphill fight since Senator Cronin introduced it. So they were talking about ways to counter the fact that we feel the lottery would be detrimental to not only our Volk School, but others. So they talked about engaging with those who need convincing. But this was interesting. They said, it cannot just be superintendent speaking. We need third-party validators to speak, members of our advisory board, businesses who hire for co-op programs, and the local business community who really understand the importance of not having kids in Volk Schools who may be around dangerous equipment, who have problems that would relate to that, whether it's behavior or whatever. So they want everyone to take part. So I guess, and, and we have people that can do that. So I think we will call on them. So they are calling on all of us to take action, get involved, make our voices heard. The other piece of the admission conversation, and I think we all read, the other threat, DESI is again undertaking, once again, to revise admissions, admissions policy. They want, there was a letter that came out. I think we all read the letter that Holly sent out where they're going to give special grants, but not to us if we're not schools that are lottery-based, which, I don't know. Will that happen? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that.
I'm not sure if that's going to happen, but there was a letter. And we also, of course, need to convince the governor and the Secretary of Education. Maybe he changed his mind a little when he came here. But all in all, it, it's an all-court press, and I guess we need everyone to really work on this.
Who, where, and when? I can have a, a series of businesses bombad to the emails.
You should, we should totally see what we can do with our business partners. Just even like statements, I guess, written to you.
Well, I did a survey of the advisory board about the lottery, and I have that data to present. And they are strongly opposed to a blind admissions lottery. So the Karen McGuire from Tri-County and I are presenting at the Board of Education Study Session on Monday night. The regular board meeting follows that next Tuesday morning, but it's being held in Holyoke. Well, they're going there to recognize Holyoke for coming out of receivership and.
I just love this often because of how far it is.
I know. But I do think that, you know, it, it can't just be, because it looks like that we're being protectionist when it's just the superintendent standing up there. And it's like, you know, and I think when you do hear from business partners.
Right, the other people.
Students, when you hear from, you know, about why it's not, why it's not good for kids. I think that's what's being lost in all of this, is it's easy to see why one or the other is good for school. Why is it not good for kids?
Do we have students that are willing to voice what the application process meant to them?
So when I did the survey with the advisory board, there were quite a number of students that, that responded. The, the detail they provided wasn't, wasn't as detailed as I would like. But we could certainly do a school-wide.
I'm just saying for even like when we do, we hear legislative breakfast and those people are here and just have like a presentation from the students that are here and the effects it has.
That's interesting, yeah.
One of the biggest problems with that is we have legislative breakfast, and it's great, it's a great time, but it's an echo chamber. The only people that come here are the people that support us, not the people that are against us. So it's just a big legislative echo chamber sometimes. Not that it's a bad thing to do, and it's great to have them involved, but.
One thing they said, MAS C was supporting was local control. In other words, district by district. There are some districts that are way out of whack on their demographics.
That's true.
And, and the thing is, maybe they have to, they have to look at their policies because they are definitely discriminatory. But ours are.
Correct.
We, we really reflect our district, and we should be judged differently than the ones that are out of whack.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that they can't really do that, but there's no, other than emailing right now, there's no action that our communities could technically take, right? So like, there's no vote actions, there's no like protesting or anything of that capacity.
The only thing you could do is request to be placed on the Board of Education Agenda for Public Comment. And I believe they limit it to, it's 10 public comments per, per session or something like that. But you could do that. Certainly, you know, email is not an ineffective way to let people know that, that you care about the issue.
One small way that I think people can voice their support on this is to be there for the meeting. It's a virtual meeting on Monday.
Oh, yes.
And it's open to the public, so if.
That makes a difference. Yes, with any legislators, they, they count the number of people and they count the number of messages in and sometimes.
We'll send the link out. The link doesn't, I think they shut off comments, right, last time?
Oh, yeah.
You couldn't sign in, you couldn't, whatever, but they can see how many people are participating.
Oh, yes, and that makes a diff, that definitely makes a difference, for sure. That's a good point.
And then we do have three superintendents who are lined up to speak on that Tuesday in Holyoke. So just to kind of keep us in front of the board as well, but, so we have to keep it up.
And then they, at the end, they conclude with appreciation for Division Eight and everything, that the different groups in there, and MAS C and MAVA, who is working as hard as they can in support of opposition to the lottery. And one more thing, they, there's a challenge to our design group to design a Division Eight insignia. And there'll be a competition between the schools, and there'll be a modest prize, something like a gift card to Amazon. But anyone, if, you know, you know, you can let them know, anyone who's interested to let Holly know. And they can work on that.
Is there a link? Is there a information we could share? Because we could share it with our advertising design group.
That would be great too.
Yeah, I would like to see us work on that.
So all in all, it really, I think we found it to be, you know, a very interesting and good conference. I was telling Tony that we went to something on belongingness, which fits right into people and culture and how that feels, so that was good. And what was probably the best, most, the thing that made us feel the best was, I don't know if you know Jimmy Tingle? He's a comedian? Do you know who that is? Yeah. I didn't realize it. He's a local comedian. I think he grew up in South Boston or, and so forth. But he was, I guess he's been around for a long time. I didn't know him that well, but he was on the Johnny Carson Show and he was on Sixty Minutes. But he had everyone laughing. And I think, you know, there was a point at the conference that that was necessary. So we appreciated that as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Barbara? Next up, actually Chair Branch, I think you're on double duty here. We got policy sub and then after that, people and culture. So let's start with policy because we have a motion that we need to, to do.
So did my own?
So did my own? Well, actually, I was gonna ask you if you wanted, I can be one minute on People and Culture, but I need your approval to skip to that agenda item.
Sure, let's move, let's see what number that is.
Because Holly's gonna have to go over the changes.
Yep, so we'll go 9D out of order, so we'll do 9D first.
So we've, we've talked about People and Culture, and for those that are listening, for our new school committee, a person is really about making sure with respect to admission of People and Culture, that everyone has a voice is one thing, but also to make sure that everyone at this particular district is heard, and I think that we are accomplishing that. One of the things that I loved about the Dignity Index, it gives the best language, dignity, number eight. Each of us is born with inherent worth, so we treat everyone with dignity no matter what, and that's, that's really what our work is about with respect to People and Culture. When we started on this journey, we talked a little bit about, or maybe a lot about data, what the students were thinking, what staff was thinking, and then we narrowed it down to what we should be looking at is the school readiness assessment. Some of that conversation happened today, but it happened as early as that meeting, I think it was October 29th, to really look at how we can build a communication plan to make sure that this gets out to our school community. So that's what we're talking about, and that's what we're working on. One of the things that I love about this organization, and I'm so, so committed to helping with this work, is that people are really working from their heart. This is not a political stunt. This is professionals that are committed to making sure that our students are respected, that are also making sure that they are respected as staff members under Holly's leadership. So People in Culture was such an important subcommittee that we developed here, and I just want to, again, thank everyone for allowing it to be in existence. But again, data, we need data. One of the things that I love about Holly, we don't have to reinvent the wheel because the work we had already been done. So as we build a communication plan around this that meets the linguistic requirements because of the communities that we serve, I think we're gonna do very, very well in moving forward. And I think that's the gist of my report. If I missed anything, charge it to my mind, not to my heart.
Thank you. So then we'll go to 9C, so the Policy Subcommittee Meeting.
So Policy is a little bit more straightforward. We are reviewing policies that, as are required, as we are required to do. Many of the language are, needs, excuse me, some of the language needs to be changed, that's been, that has been redacted or stricken. Holly can go over some of the details, but specifically, we worked on Policy LA in K.A. I didn't see if we were going to do something around, oh, I forgot what it was. Okay, I'll forget about it because I forgot what it was.
If you remember, let me know.
Yeah, I don't think-
We had a few policies that we updated.
Something that you mentioned earlier today that we-
Yeah, it had to do with the S-PAC play bill.
Yes, that's what, okay.
Oh, yes.
I didn't see that yet, that's why I was confused. Holly, please.
Thank you. So we have been going through sort of a continual review of our policy book, and we rely, as a lot of school districts do, on MASC. One of the great values that it brings to school districts is that it does a regular review of policies and updates them in case there are changes in laws or regulations so that we're not constantly doing that. And then they also go through and say, "Oh, this policy is just poorly written, and we're gonna fix it." So that's this first one, they've just rewritten it to be more readable, so nothing has changed there. We did make some changes to the request for outside projects, Policy, because what was written didn't align with what we were currently doing and just didn't make sense. So we rewrote that to see, be more in line with how we actually look at outside projects, and we're really talking about construction projects and things for, for our communities. So that's been updated. And then we got rid of a lot of stuff that didn't need to be there. Some of this is just being more inclusive in our language. We do have families that come in various different configurations, and so trying to be thoughtful about that. No substantive changes to non-custodial parent rights, just making it more readable Relationships with parent organizations, so we just kind of made it a little bit clearer that if a parent organization, like for example, an athletic booster club, wanted to start here, they need to organize as a 501(c)(3) first, and then there's, there's a process for that. So just sort of laying out, like if a parent organization wanted to organize and contribute here, that's what they would have to do. So, let's see, that's just an old policy that gets from the public, you know, we go through that process at every school committee meeting. Donations have to be accepted by the school committee, there has to be some value to us, and the reason that we do that is so people don't just give us a bunch of stuff we don't need, so they do have to go through a process for that. We have updated this to ensure that people know that our Records Access Officer information is on our About page of our website. So that was added, it's not in blue here, Tony, but I added it at the bottom.
And one of, one of the things that we found out when we were looking at this policy, guess who the Access Officer is? It's Holly. So I mean, that's something that can't be delegated to-
I do, I take, I get the request, but I delegate the response.
You do, okay, okay, all right, because I know we're talking about-
Check against score.
There you go.
Nope, nope. I was the Records Access Officer before, so it kind of makes sense, so just leave it there. But no, I delegate that out, I give them the due date, I put a tickler on my calendar, and then I circle back. But everybody's very good about that. They take those very seriously. Community use of digital resources, it's just talking about, like, we have Wi-Fi, we have, you know, but it's, it's not just out there for anybody to use, it's a privilege for members of the community. We don't have to give you the password, you know, those kind of things. We do make it reasonably available. No change to this one, it was actually updated earlier this year. And this is, again, just wordsmithing to make it, you know, a little bit easier to read, that we're going to, you know, we're reasonably cooperative with the news media, we promote the school, we respond to requests for information from them, and things like that, so. Public concerns, updated this because the public has a right to tell us what they think about how things are going, and the word complaint has some negative connotations to it about the person who's giving the feedback, right? So it's, it's really just trying to think in a more positive way about the information, questions and concerns that are raised. So the only place we left complaints is if it's anonymous, because those generally are just complaints. So that second part of it doesn't have to be there. So anything that's like one of these, KEE, that's an exhibit, we don't actually need to have those in the policy book. Public complaints about school personnel, that was actually rolled up into the previous one, same thing here. Community use of school facilities, we just went through here and aligned it with our current policies, because we do have a supervisor maintenance conferences and events, and he is the point person for all of that. And just saying that we do give priority for, like if the town of Easton wants to hold the meeting here, we would give them priority over, you know, New York City or something. Oh, this one, we will take out, this has, the exhibit should be all read, because that's just going down into the rules once you rent it, and we have a separate document for that. We have a separate rental agreement, so all of that will be out. The rental rates are a separate document, all of this is part of Bob Riley's process for when he rents, helps us rent facilities. All of this is just redundant. Public solicitation, so again, we don't allow commercial activities in the school, anything, and this comes up quite a bit around charitable giving, for example. The school committee has to approve any charitable fundraising in the school, and it's important that they do that. This is the one we were speaking about earlier, advertising in the school. So we don't allow excessive advertisement, but some advertisement in, you know, the S-PAC play bill and things is helpful for us to, to earn money for the kids. Visitors to the school, this is really an MASC policy that was written more for, like, elementary school parents or guardians. So we updated it that, you know, if you want to visit the school, you go through the lobby guard, and it happens so infrequently. I mean, unless you're an invited guest, it would be very weird for people to show up and just want to go sit in a classroom. Relations with booster organizations, again, that was sort of rolled up into a previous policy that we looked at. And then we did rewrite this one, relations, it used to be with police authorities, and we just updated it to law enforcement, and we talk about, you know, that we have a school resource officer, and that the roles and responsibilities of the school resource officer versus like behavior management is in our memorandum of understanding. And I've provided a link to the model, MoU, which is what we use with the town of Easton to support our, our SRO relationship, which is very positive. And this one, it's, just is an outdated policy. School committee has to get along with everybody, so, I don't know why, just the planning. But, so, it's included in this one, relations with local governing authorities. So I don't know if there are any questions about K policies?
Any questions, comments?
Only comment that I have is, and I'm looking right at it, thank you, Deb, and thank Holly, because this is the work you all had to reconcile these policies. Thank you, thank you.
Well, and thank you, Policy Sub, too.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. L is much shorter.
Yes, I just love it.
L is, L-A is just a wordsmithing. Same with LB, and LBC is, doesn't apply to regional vocational schools. So that is it for our policy review.
All right.
So this is-
Oh, this should be moved to accept, right?
That's right, so-
Yeah, this is, well, it says the first reading.
Somebody's cut pieces not too well. Usually goes to the full committee for the first reading.
I know. I mean, do we need a second reading?
Put in your motion.
You all know what I'm asking.
Put in the second reading.
So, right, I think that, well, technically, what we're supposed to do is move to suspend the rules and then move, instead of going through all that complication. So I'm gonna just make this, so I'm gonna move to recommend to the full school committee to accept the policies as presented with the revisions and updates. K and L policy is recommended by the Policy Subcommittee on October 29th, 2024. That is my motion.
Are you going to waive the second?
And waive the second reading?
Right, well, that's why I said it like that, and waive the second, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and waive the second reading?
Right.
Correct.
So the way I said it would have been what we implemented. Yeah, yeah.
I second.
Good.
All right. Any further discussion?
Second.
Let's bring it to a vote, all those in favor. Opposed, abstentions, I have it, Eero.
Thank you all, thank you.
Other reports, I'm just wondering, Chair Montero, if you could just give a status update on negotiations, please?
Oh.
Oh, it's-
That's it.
It's going on.
All right.
We're negotiating. We have, we have a meeting that's gonna-
Next week.
Next week.
Thursday.
Yeah.
First.
In the school. In the school.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, next week will be a second year.
Yep, all right.
Let's go, let's go.
Awesome. All right, any other reports that I've, that we missed? Now, we'll move to the report of the superintendent.
I have a fun report.
Thanks.
I do. I have a fun report. So as you know, back in, I believe, February or March, the school committee approved the use of some, some funding that had been available for Irish studies for about 20 years, and allowed Mark Morris and Katie Tuchanardi and I to go to Ireland with a group of, it was a total of 19 educators. Some were assistant principals, principals, superintendents, a couple of retired superintendents, which was interesting, and to visit schools in Ireland. So we arrived on a Sunday, we spent one full day sort of sightseeing in, well, we arrived on Saturday, spent the Sunday sort of sightseeing, and then started our school visits on that Monday. So the goal was to really learn about the education systems in Ireland and Northern Ireland, so those are two different countries, understand the impact of history and culture on the systems, focus in particular on special student services, and then also explore how career technical education is incorporated into their education systems. So we visited a school that's Mark Morris. While we were there, it was Math Week, or Maths Week, as they say in Ireland, and the student was doing a magic trick based on math that they had just learned from a magician who visited that morning. So the school we visited was an all-boys primary school, all of the students were from low-income families. One of the things that we learned while we were there is that schools are very, very segregated based on income. And to have a school like ours where you have students who are lower income, middle income, and higher income all together, it doesn't, they could not compute, because it's very community-based, and if your community is poor, your school is poor, if you're- So there are special programs from the government to sort of help economically disadvantaged schools. They had a huge focus on attendance just because of a lot of the stuff that kids were having to deal with at home. They, like, as soon as you walk in the door, it's like the grade four has 95% attendance today, grade six has. The schools are all still mostly segregated by religion, so this was a Catholic school. You don't have to be Catholic to go there, but also on the wall were pictures of the boys' first communion classes. So, you know, it was interesting, very different from, from our public school system. And we learned that teacher salaries are set by the national government, and they are the same, like, the teacher salaries are the same whether you live in Dublin or Connemara or wherever. They're, and they're, the average teacher salary is about $40,000 a year, and their cost of living is lower, but it's, it's not that much lower. So that was an interesting fact. The second school we visited was called Swords Secondary School. This serves kids from about 12 or 13 to 18. They told, told us about their Leaving Cert, which is their exam that they have to pass to graduate. And when I tell you that they teach to the test, they teach to the test. We sat in a, in English classroom where they were literally like, "You have to start your, your essay with a quote, so find a quote that you really like, three or four quotes that can fit into a lot of different, you know, topics, and memorize those. You have to start with a quote, then they want to see this," and then they want, and it was, oof. So we've, we've never gotten there with in class, so that was real teaching to the test. To graduate, what I thought was interesting is, they test in their core academic subjects, but they also have to pass three exams in practical subjects. So they, if they did culinary arts or home ec, they called it, they had to cook for someone, and they were judged on their cooking. They could do arts, they could do metalworking, but they had to do three practical exams to graduate from high school. I thought that was good. But generally, and Mark can weigh in on any of this also, there was no pure CVTE at the secondary level. It's all really introductory, pre-vocational. If you really want to take that career path, it is post-secondary. at the secondary level. It's all really introductory, pre-vocational. If you really want to take that career path, it is post-secondary. And it's three or four years post-secondary. So they had some very basic woodworking, drafting, which they were still doing by hand, and some metalworking there. The Houston Street School in Belfast is probably my favorite school. They have, they have a very diverse student population, a lot of immigrants. The day we got there, they had just welcomed a family from Gaza. Extremely limited resources. And what we saw across the board is that they tended to have pretty good teacher staffing levels. They tended to have pretty good paraprofessional staffing levels. What they didn't have were adjustment counselors or any, like, E S L, those kind of things. That was just almost non-existent. So this particular school gets a school adjustment counselor three hours, one day a week. And they have to decide who gets adjustment counseling services. So what they do is they just train the entire school in trauma-informed teaching practices. So that they're all sort of working to the best of their ability with, with students. And really what we saw across the board was very limited resources for anything extra. The first school we went to, they told us they are allowed three special education assessments per year. Other than that, parents would have to pay on their own, and none of their parents could afford to pay. So what they do is they take the bottom ten percent of kids, the lowest performing ten percent, and they just treat all of them as if they have special education needs, and that's, that's how it goes, so. We found that almost entirely across the board. Except for this school. This is the Ardineshe School in Derry, Northern Ireland. And it is a school entirely for kids with special needs. And we, when we first got there, they gave us a great presentation about their shared value and their shared mission, and it was awesome. And then they took us to see the choir. Every morning the kids come in and they sing for, I don't know, ten or fifteen minutes. It wasn't a long, long time, but they were, it was amazing. Any kid could participate, and then there, you can't really see it, but in the back they had like a solo mic set up. And if you wanted to sing solo, you just ask, and you got to go up and you could sing solo, and I mean, they knocked it out of the park. They had a very strong commitment to professional development. Teacher-led professional development every Monday after school for an hour and a half. So this school was actually pretty well-funded. They had an arrangement with the park next door to use all their parkland so they could take kids out into nature and had some wonderful facilities, but absolute, excellent, excellent teaching staff. And then we went to this school that I cannot pronounce. It was Irish-speaking school out in the western part of the, of the country, Connemara. And they, I would say all the schools that we went to showed a particular attention to needs of students on the autism spectrum. So their little hanging plant thing there, that word in Irish means tranquility. Every school had like sensory rooms, like, you know, places where the kids could go bounce off the walls if they needed to. Like, just really thoughtfully designed spaces, even in the, even in the schools that were struggling for students who had sensory needs and students on the autism spectrum, so. And this was the one place where the principal, who's there at the top, told us that they were really starting to see kids become more interested in career technical education. And he was like, one of our brightest students has decided they're not going to college, they want to be an electrician. I was like, yes. So I think they're starting to see the need as, as well. So that was a very interesting, interesting school. So just wanted to say thank you on behalf of Mark and Katie. We had a really great trip. We learned a lot. We, we had a great group of people who were really all there for the right, right reasons. And we did get to see a little bit of Ireland along the way. So thank you very much. I wanted to present that to you. And, and thank you for, for giving us a really incredible opportunity.
So now here comes the question. Okay, so whenever somebody is sent off on a P D trip, right, we always ask them, like, well, what, what are you bringing back?
I will tell you what I'm bringing.
Okay.
Oh, shoot, I just closed it. Hang on. The one thing that I, was my one biggest point, and I forgot to mention it. Hang on, just a second. So the thing that stood out to me the most was how intentional, it may not come up, how intentional each of the schools was about their core values and their mission. And how very clear it was in every school that we walked into, who they were and what they were about and what they stood for. And the one school that I, I thought really nailed it, hang on, for me, was, this was the Houston Street School. So this is the very diverse, lots of immigrants, lots of students who do not speak English as their primary language. So as soon as you walked in, they had a big banner that is the UNICEF Commission on the Rights of the Child. And that's, that's right there. And it's, it's there in other languages, too. I, I took a picture of the, of the one in English. Then all around the school, you'll see like this little sign here, you know, this is the right of the month. And in October, it was you have a right to have friends and clubs. And then you can't read the fine print, but it says, we are a rights-respecting school. We are achieving excellence together. Every classroom, the students and the teacher had decided from among those, those articles, those rights, which ones were important to them. And they had them posted on the doors you went in. They had them posted on walls in the classroom. And, you know, some of them were, you have a right to express your opinion and for people to listen to you. And it was just so intentional everywhere you went about who they were and what they were about. I saw that at the Ardineshe School, the special education school. They had a very unified vision for who they were and how they were going to teach. And, and you, it wasn't them giving us a presentation and telling us this is who we are. You felt it in every room you went into and every interaction in the design of the school. And so what I brought back is, that's who we are going to be, right? I think we're on our way there, but everybody should be able to walk into Southeastern Regional School District and say, this is who Southeastern is. This is what we stand for. This is how we're going to teach. This is how we're going to treat one another. And it, it should just be, become so ingrained in our culture that nobody can make a mistake about it. So what I brought back is intentionality and how important it is. And how even a school that has no resources, that, you know, they, it's a hundred and something-year-old building, it's a historic building, they can't add on to it, they can't change anything, the roof is leaking, it was, it's a lot. There was passion in education and, and it, it was great because they are united around a shared vision of who they are, who their kids are, and what they value. So that's what I brought back.
I have a question.
Yeah.
In that group of superintendents and other members, were you all vocational bound or were you just regular?
No, you were the only vocational.
So you guys were the only ones that understood, like, the need for training and education? And do they have, did they share with you the amount of students that leave to go to college versus that post-secondary C V T training?
They really didn't, and I'll tell you why. It's, the attitude is, if you don't pass your leaving cert or if you don't do well enough to get into the university, then you go and you get a trade. They still had a very old-fashioned idea about what you're supposed to do post-secondary.
So the expectation is mostly many of them go to college? That's interesting for such like communities that just don't, that are like low-educated technically, like, when it comes to their parents and older generations where it just kind of lacks. That's very interesting.
It was. It was very interesting, so, but. Just a, yes, sir?
No, just a quick question. And I'm a little confused. So you showed us where the young adults or the kids were, singing, had an opportunity to go to the microphone, solo. You didn't do it. Mark didn't do it. I'm just wondering why you didn't show Southeastern, and on the international stage, what you could do.
Right. We felt like we were vocational trained and we're professionally educated.
There you go.
We felt like we were traumatized.
I'm just saying, there was an opportunity there to shine.
That'd be a fun night, an open mic night here. For the kids.
We have the first two.
For the kids.
Just wondering.
Mark, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, just really, I was really appreciative for when, again, you see what their vocational programs were. And, you know, I appreciate for the, for the school committee that we have, for the government, the partner bed, the funding we have to give the opportunities to our students, because a lot of these schools, you know, they have a scramble for whatever they could do, put together what they could do to give back to those students. And sometimes we take a little bit of that for granted, but I was really appreciative for what we had and the ability to, with vocational education, C T learning, those opportunities to give our students. Because a lot of those students, they, like Holly was saying, it was kind of like the second thought, right? If you didn't pass, you didn't do well enough to get into college, then why should we look for a trade? Kind of back this thing back in the early seventies, early eighties. I was really appreciative for that, for what we have and the ability we have to give those opportunities to our students. So I think there's really an eye-opener there.
I do have one additional question. I know there are some schools that can do it. But when it comes to like exchange students, is there anyone that we can pair up with from those, like, that community particularly or other communities, if we found sponsored families or anything like that?
Student. I, we haven't had one in a little while.
So if, if the host parents were in Mansfield for a long time, I had a lot of them in class. But they weren't, they weren't necessarily through our school. It was just that parent, right, Mansfield, it was right off. Yeah, she used to take a kid every year for.
Yes.
That's right. I had seven or eight of them.
So it's based on like the parent, like the parents, the families that want to take them in and then? Can we, do we have, like, if there was a parent that wanted to send them to this school, would we have the space to do that? Or is that something that they would have to, like, go through the process?
We would take them above and beyond, so we'd take them a little beyond our students, like we do sometimes with the faculty. So they could only stay for one year and we would put them in the junior year just because we would have to worry about M C A S. And, so, yeah.
We have everyone in M C A S, but all now, so.
Yes, we were always more, they were always that, I mean.
Yes. The way they have classes in most countries are, it's like, they get through, you know, everything that we're doing in a year, you know, until they have some classes that we have over two years in one year. So they had the core requirements to, to be able to participate as an eleven threes, so they was always old enough to do that, so.
It's not a bad idea.
So we didn't, they didn't take the admission of anybody else, but we allowed them to come. Because Mansfield wouldn't allow them to come and they didn't have a space for them, so.
Oh, really? They were always great kids. I mean, they played on the lacrosse team.
Should look into that.
Just the same, if there's like a part of like a family or put it out to the families, like, does anyone want to participate in this program?
We had one last year, the year before, there was one, but they, the students, they still have to, you still have to go through the admissions criteria. And it was like things that were missing in, in the, and, you know, I didn't want to, just admissions being so tight. Like, I didn't want to go outside of what our policies were for anybody, so.
You should probably develop a, a, one exchange student admissions policy.
Yes, Kelly.
No, I would support that.
Was it the same family that came for one year?
Yeah, it was the same family. It was the same family that she would take students from different countries. And they did say, like, if you ever have a student that, you know, over Christmas break, that, you know, wants to participate, we can let them do something like that. It was one particular family that would do that.
Just one point on M C A S. So currently, M C A S is still the law. Any change, the earliest that any changes can go into effect is December the fifth. And we don't know that changes will actually go into effect, so like, we administered M C A S retest today. Because we're still required to administer M C A S for graduation purposes at this point. So, you know, we will see what happens. I think it's important to understand that with, well, M C A S being gone, it is now going to be up to Southeastern to set graduation criteria. So it gives some control back to the local school committee. But we'll have to, have to have a tough look at what our graduation requirements are going to be. I don't know if Desi's going to come out with any kind of guidance. I don't, you know.
That was one of the issues in the no votes.
Yeah.
They didn't like the fact that each district will decide.
Right.
They, they won't be uniform.
Right. And we are still required to administer it as a condition of receiving federal funding, for now.
We also don't know what the legislature is going to do with it.
We, we don't. The legislature can really delay the effective date of any changes. Because it's tough to, you know, as written, we would throw the M C A S out this year. Well, it's tough to do that when we're, you know, midway through the school year, but we shall see. So as of right now, it is still required and we, like, Wednesday and Thursday after the election, we administered retest. Today, we administered retest, so.
Tomorrow we do.
Tomorrow.
Just gotta keep going until you're told that it was.
That's right. We are at the acting principal.
Okay, so next up is the acting principals' report, and Principal Grayby.
So as Holly mentioned, we had math retest today. We had the school council meeting last week, which was great. We invited our director of guidance, Lois Miller, just to talk about, we talked at the first meeting about what some priorities were for people and just understanding the guidance services and how they would get support. And what is, just understanding guidance and what do they do, what sort of makeup, what do students have for access to their guidance counselor, what's the mental health services, what are some of the initiatives that we have? So we went over all of those and we left room for feedback from parents about communication, about, you know, their ability to meet with their guidance counselor, what's our, what's our college planning process, our career college, career process. Just so that people had a real understanding. We talked about, you know, maybe having some suggestions, what do other schools do that, you know, do they have children in other schools that they feel like that communication is really great or they had a good experience there? So it was just really nice to hear from families. It's, you know, again, we talked earlier about, you know, collaborating and really coming forward with an effort. You know, I think that everyone, again, intentionally tries to do a really nice job with what we do. It doesn't mean that people won't have a suggestion about something that they saw that was great at another school or could work better or different than we do. And so we sort of welcome those ideas and suggestions from people. And this is what we currently do and if they have, they have anything. So what the parents did ask for was to go back on our website, we used to have it, it was a checklist. So in grade ten, you know, the families have a checklist of, you know, all the things that they need to do for their child. Like even, even in grade ten, as early as grade ten, to start thinking about when their child might take driver's ed, you know, good student discount. Like, do they think of like those things? And the same thing that I had mentioned earlier, they asked if you really just sort of take everything as if they know nothing, right? Explain like they know nothing, and so give links for them to click on to so that they could get more information about that. Like, where would I go to find that? So even though you're telling me, I might not know, like, how to drill down into any of that information. So we are going to take what we used to have for ten, eleven, and twelve, and nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and then just break that down a little further and then post that back on our website so that families have that. They are also, the guidance department is working with our vocational supervisors who do a Pathways to Possibilities, which is a career fair that will take place. We do a college fair, we're also going to start doing a career fair on January twenty first from eight thirty to eleven thirty. We had our fall advisory dinner, which was fantastic. Mary and Jared and Jen Hall and Culinary did, did a really amazing job. There were two hundred and thirty guests there, so it was really nice to, to see. We have a hundred and ninety-three students that are cooperating in the senior class. Admissions, we have nine hundred and two applications, so I'd like to come here. So.
So just a couple.
Yeah. Before open house, but it's, and it's again, it's, I, I still think I notice a lot of talk about the lottery. I, I still think I notice a lot of talk about the lottery stuff. I just still think that we should look at those things with pride, that people want to be here. They want to have the experience that, you know, that we get from our students and our staff. And, you know, we don't take that lightly. It's not, it's, it's really, it just should be a compliment to the work that people do every day because they work really hard here and so, um, and, and people hear that. People go back to their community and say that, which is how I feel at, as a student at Southeastern. So they're telling their experiences and that's what, where the applications are coming from. So again, we hate to say no to anybody, but, um, it's coming from a good place. So I don't, I don't want to lose sight of that ever. Uh, so November 23rd is our open house from 11 to 2. Um, Holly and I created over the summer sort of a plan of engagement and just to engage with academic teachers to, you know, once a week, make sure that we're in classrooms and looking at, watching teachers and being part of, um, their everyday teaching and having that experience with them, being in and out of vocational programs, which has been great. And then we're going to start some employer visits, um, in early December so that we can start to visit them and see what their experience is like with Southeastern, um, get some feedback from them as well. Um, we developed strategic planning meetings that have started so that we can build a strategic plan. Um, and also data meetings so that we're talking about, we're looking specifically at our data and making decisions around that for, um, everything that we do. So, and all of that is, is great, but I like to also, um, for me is have teacher, have meetings directly with teachers. So for the past couple of weeks, I've been meeting with vocational teachers, have several meetings tomorrow, um, and then I will move to the academic departments. But one of the things that I'm looking for in the meetings is just to really listen to, um, our teachers. What are you, what are their strengths? Like, what are they really proud of that they accomplish, that they do? Because sometimes we don't realize how much they do or how much they're capable of doing. Uh, what are some of the barriers? What are some of the things that are getting in their way or, or can sort of stop them from doing the work that they want to do? Um, and what's their vision for the future? Like of their program, how do they stay current in their field? Um, and their responses have just been amazing. It's people are doing great, great work. Um, things that they're looking for or need from us are very small for, you know, they need very little fuel, um, but some of the things that they do need are important to them. So Jared and Mary have been awesome. They are creating their lists so we can sit down with Holly and, and just give this overall feedback of, you know, this is how well the school's doing, this is what people are doing. We talk a lot about, you know, when something goes wrong, but we don't talk enough about like all these great things that are happening, um, in the school and that teachers are, are doing and are a part of. We, um, are able to do the project playhouse. Um, Jared and the carpentry program initiated that again for a two-year-old girl. We worked with Bryant University to do that. The girl's name is Hope, was battling cancer. Um, so if you saw the playhouse last year, we built that big playhouse that was a little mermaid theme. And this one, um, she is a Disney, shows Disney princesses and Minnie Mouse and Coco Melon. I don't know. But she, uh, she has a twin sister faith, so it should be a really nice, if you can make it to that event, it's, it's really heartwarming. Um, we are working with Habitat for Humanity, um, so we're getting out there as part of the community. Um, we're still working on Smith Farm. They're doing, uh, rehab of the farmhouse, DW Field Park, the new welcome center. Um, and I just want to make a correction, so the, there is, um, Jerrion and them have a group, um, that, again, they're starting like a student movement of, um, that can release the podcast. I should be able to release it in the next day or so, but they want to do something for SETV News. So I'll release it to you first before, you know, I release it, but it's, it's really excellent. And again, they're focused on making it cool to be a good student and a good person. Um, and they talk, their first couple of ones are about their experiences. Where did they come from? What experience have they had that shaped who they are and who they are today and where, where they want to go? Uh, but there was, the second podcast was the one with the Secretary of Education. So those are not the same students. So I just wanted to clarify from earlier that that was something that cybersecurity did and invited the Secretary of Education. So it was a three seniors that were in that program that invited the Secretary of Education. So it's sort of, they both have the ability to do podcasts in video and performing and, and there. So I don't want to, I didn't want to take away their credit from, from their program. So they did a really, really nice job and, uh, it was amazing.
I'm sorry, but so can we just clarify then? So it's a school-run podcast where you can have different students participate as wish, as well, and then whatever?
Yeah, so what they're trying, yeah, they're trying to get, um, they're trying to get as many students involved as possible to say, you know, how do we, like, how do we influence each other in a really positive way? So if the school needs anything or, you know, we're, want to, I don't just present in a certain way. We want to make sure, like, you had said earlier, treat each other with a level of dignity and respect. Like, what does that look like? What does that mean? You know, what does that mean to a teenage student? Um, you know, they talk a lot about even teachers, like, we watch you all the time. The way you treat each other matters, right? Because we see that and you're our models and that matters to us. They want to interview teachers. They want to talk about, get their perspective and, um, what their view on things are. And they're very willing, you know, even in the, um, school council meeting, there's, um, 10 students on there and saying, this is what we can do, this is how we can do our part. So they're not, you know, no one's, um, everyone's who are taking responsibility for themselves in a really positive way, uh, how do I make this community better? How do I work towards, you know, making this a place that people want to be? How do I leave a legacy of, um, the kind of community that we want to have? So when I step away, that this community is still functioning in a way. So they now have a 10th grader that has joined them so that, you know, he can sort of take that torch with them. But they're very, it's, it's, it's really, really great. So they're, um, they're on almost their third episode. So it's just that we have teachers that are helping them, like, on the side to edit it and stuff on top of their job and on top of, you know, for Chris Cross and so, he's amazing. But he does drama and he does, you know, he does so much. And he's taken this on as, you know, one more thing to, to do because he enjoys it and he's a good person. And, and so, um, they're, you know, they're working to get that out. So he just has a few edits to make and then we'll put it on SETV News. And then again, you know, again, kids are taking ownership in like cybersecurity. They did an amazing job reaching out to the, um, Secretary of Education and inviting him here. He had a great experience here, um, and, uh, so hopefully had an opportunity to listen to that, so. So you get still a lot of students taking leadership, um, opportunities here. So we have hundreds of students that want to participate. When we sent something out for leadership opportunities, the amount of, Rob, what did you say? You said how many, uh, when you did, you sent yours out for to be on your team? You had what, like 30 students that showed up?
Yeah, 39 signed up, but 20, 23 showed.
Just to be part of his group right out of the gates. So I had the same thing. I, it was really tough to pick the school council because there were so many unbelievable stories of, like, 40 kids, you know, Shannon had like 100 kids for a student leadership group or student ambassadors. So everyone wants to be a sort of part of, you know, putting their stamp on the community in a positive way, so. So those are the great things and, you know, we have problems just like everyone else and when they come, we handle them and, but we don't let that bog us down. Those are just issues for the moment. That's it.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Christina. Any questions for Christina?
Um, I do have two comments just to piggyback off of your presentation. So, um, one question is, I know that we're speeding up to open house. Would it be possible to get a, um, school committee table for any school committee members that want to come in and just kind of meet the community? And then if you guys are free for that day, we'll be in a location that parents, teachers, and everyone can find us.
In the cafeteria?
You're coming.
Thanks, Sandy, for volunteering the whole table, the whole time.
I don't think you quite heard me, right?
So that also piggybacks off of, I went, I went to the conference last week and I was only partic, able to participate in a couple of things. And one of the things is the school committee belonging or whatever it was. So with that and kind of to piggyback off what the kids are doing, they talked about, um, trusted adults and getting students with trusted adults and all of these things and how difficult is for students to find adults that they trust. So I wasn't sure if there is a way that we could kind of broadcast, um, meet our teachers and our faculty, like, on, on a screen or so, where we pick a faculty member or a teacher for, to like two or three a week, to just kind of have a PowerPoint process through that just says who they are, what they do here, why they joined, like, why they love Southeastern, I guess. And then maybe if they speak other languages, to list those, so those foreign language children can come and find them and use them as an asset. And that really is just because like the guidance counselor doesn't always get to kids and sometimes they don't want to go to the guidance counselor because it has to be escalated. Sometimes they just want to talk to somebody else. So those are just two, uh, questions I had.
So, can you talk a little bit more about that? So you want to, to have like a student that we identify or a teacher?
I, so that would be nice, yeah, for our teachers to just kind of present themselves.
Okay.
Any teacher that's like willing to present themselves as like an asset or an additional trusted adult that somebody could come to and, and speak to. Yeah, yeah, like, really, I was like thinking about people that like no one sees, like, the library and really like who, how many students know the library and like what she does and like, things like that or like your school nurse or something like that and kind of why they're here. And if they speak other languages, for those foreign language students that can't always get to trans, a translator, if that's like available.
That's great. And then if they speak different languages, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, like any kind of fact they want to share, comfortable sharing or whatever.
Sure. That's a great idea because often, you know, kids, they don't mention that, like, I don't know where my teachers went to school. So if I'm thinking about a school or I'm thinking about a career and I don't know that that was their career, I don't know that they, you know, sometimes they switched industries and they didn't realize that that was sort of their initial career that they started off in. So that's great, so they can sort of seek that teacher out. And if there's a picture there, right, like, you're the one?
Right, right. I just feel like it's going to build a little bit more trust in like visual visibility.
And I think, I mean, I think I can speak on that of the faculty by saying our, our kids have good relationships with their teachers and especially their vocational teachers.
Yeah.
Generally see you as trusted adults and, you know, but I agree. I, I'm, and you know what? I think even for myself, because there's so many new people since COVID and, um, that I don't know as well and I'd love to get to know everybody a little bit better, so.
I think that's a great idea.
And Canton, we have little signs outside of our door that says like, hi, my name is, and I speak these languages. And then you have to put like what book you're reading currently.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And that changes a lot.
Oh, I like that.
But then like the teachers who speak different languages, it says it right on our door. Not on mine, unfortunately, I always speak one language.
We have a surprise for you at open house.
Yeah.
We have a surprise for an open house that the teachers made.
On the open house, is there going to be Skills USA members giving tours or is it just going to be free to roam?
Nope.
I've had a couple of parents ask me.
Yep, there's student ambassadors, so there will be tours. There's student ambassadors, they have T-shirts on. Um, if they speak a different language, a T-shirt will be written in a different language. We'll have different language rooms, um, on that day so that you can get a lot of information about our school in your, um, in your, the language that you speak. Um, so those will be designated rooms, we'll make announcements about that. Um, and then again, we try to make it easy to identify students that, you know, maybe speak a different language. We used to have it on their lanyard, which may still have something on there, but it'll be on the back of their T-shirt as well. Um, so that they can, um, and they'll know where those rooms are to, to, you know, so that parents can talk like the frequently asked questions and go through everything that they have in their packet. And so we'll make announcements on that.
All right, moving on, um, to our TI Director's report and that.
Hello. Uh, so on Saturday, November the 2nd, the TI had our healthcare open house, which we've been doing separately for a couple of years now. Um, and it focused on dental, medical assisting and, um, the practical nurse program. We had about 100 students and, or potential students. And we have sessions on just general program information and the requirements for the program. A little bit about, about the admissions process and the testing process. And, but we have a section for financial aid, so people can ask preliminary questions about that. And we give tours of the classroom space and, um, the lab spaces. And we talk to them about making a strong application, you know, how to best represent yourself and throughout the application process. So, um, that was our, our first, but we've also had an evening medical assisting open house last week. And then coming up next week, we have, um, our first trades open house for this season, but we really have to stop calling it trades because it's also cosmetology and culinary and that type of thing. So, um, signups for that are good. This one, we tend to get a lot of maybe juniors in high school as well as seniors. So, um, it does tend to be more high school-based than, than older people. So we had a lot of parents with us as well, which is, which is always nice to see. And they very often are looking at A trade. So they, you know, tour all the programs. And, um, I will say that, um, Andy and John Madero have managed to switch people from, really invested in electrical. Until they saw the light, machine tool.
This year, I will not be to attend unfortunately, but I am going to send in a, um, replacement. So we'll make it work again.
So that means more electrical people, less?
More machine, it's less electric, electricians.
Well, we have five students going in the machine tool in the high, during the day for the TI. So that is an all-time high. So we'll see how much of that was you.
Well, yeah.
Very true. Um, we also had an advisory board meeting on the 16th of October. The food was prepared by the kids, or kids, the students in the food truck program. They did a great job. They had high school students there to help, um, do the serving and stuff, but the food was really, really great. We made a pumpkin cheesecake, which I thought sounded a little bit heavy, but it was delicious. I ate all of it. Um, but, you know, the advisory boards are, are so helpful and it's also a good opportunity. You know, we had Atreus Healthcare there who take a lot of our medical assistance on clinical, but we were able to connect them with the new program director for the practical nurse program because they're hiring practical nurses. And so, you know, those kinds of opportunities are, are great. It's good for our students and, and for our faculty. Um, but that was a great day. And then just to, I put in a few things that are going on. We have some TES tests coming up. We, um, have the electricity orientation, electricity program orientation for, is on November 14th. I think it's Thursday night because we have two things on Thursday night, um, as well as a TES test. And then, um, the high school trades open house is November the 20th and another TES test on the 17th of December 19th. We're having a guidance breakfast. I don't know that that's the best aid for, but that's the one we got. So we're having a guidance breakfast and maybe the guidance councils will all come because it'll, you know, be a relaxing morning for them. And then, not on this list, but we're having a site visit by the Veterans Administration for, um, Veterans Benefits, when we have students who are veterans. They come every couple of years and look at the school and look at our catalog and ask questions about how we do things. So that'll go be here a couple of hours on the 4th of December. And that's all good, TI.
All continues to be hopping. Yeah, any questions for Pat? All right, moving on, last but not least, um, Rob, do we always have you last? I always feel like we try to move you up.
I know.
Good guess, yes, 2A.
So a few things just, um, uh, from my HR side of things, uh, this past month, we've hired new employees in following positions. We hired a dual enrollment coordinator, on-call, daily substitute teachers, three of those. A long-term substitute too, um, STI full-time practical nurse instructor, STI part-time, uh, practical nurse instructor, two of those, and a custodian. Um, looking at some of our HR projects this, this, um, this month, mandatory training, 70% of our mandatory training has been completed by employees through Arcs Ed. Um, we are sending out final reminders to employees this week. Um, so we're, to that, you know, so we're almost there. Um, and our, seems like our community has participated well, so, and, uh, it looks like we'll meet our deadline. Lunch and Learn One is our first Lunch and Learn series for the school year. Uh, will be on Wednesday, November 20th. Uh, Lunch and Learn Series has been. Uh, Lunch and Learn Series has been developed to provide valuable insights um and knowledge to various HR topics. Uh, the first session, just like last year, will cover essentials, um, aspects of frontline central and absence management. Um, including logging in and accessing the employee, uh employees' accounts, assessing um the. And completing necessary forms, requesting time off, and managing employee absences. So um that will be um on November twentieth. Um, and it's a really good value to a lot of our employees. Our new um higher check-ins, our first round of new hire check-ins for this year is almost complete. Um, some of the emerging trends from my data um are pretty extremely positive. Uh, my members are saying inclusive in, um, that Southeastern is an inclusive and a positive uh community experience that they are, that they are um feeling. Um, positions are exceeding the initial expectations, so they are really excited about the positions and. Um, the possibilities and the collaborations that they are having. Um, employees are feeling that there's an overwhelming sense of support um from our supervisors, administrators, and mentors, which is extremely um positive. Um, and faculty and staff are welcoming and, and kind and helpful and supportive as well. So um our new employees are feeling it from all levels, um, from anywhere from the students to mentors, to faculty staff, and to their supervisors. So that is um amazing. Um, one initiative that was um that we started this past um last couple of weeks ago. Uh, the substitute walk and talk sessions. Uh, this month, um, HR department kicked off its first substitute teacher. Uh, group information um session led by Melissa Woods. Uh, this, uh, these sessions are provide potential new substitute teachers with information about the district. Um, a school tour, um, what, you know, basically looking at the day in the life of a substitute. Um, getting them familiar with shops and the different academic areas in the school building itself. Versus a lot of times substitutes, once they sign up, they just show up one day and they're given a room. Um, that's usually traditional in a lot of schools. So we wanted to kind of bridge some gaps there, especially with some of our. Um, with some of the issues that where people aren't picking up substitute um positions in the shop side. Because they're a little bit afraid, not really knowing if they could substitute in those areas. So being familiar with those areas really help bridge that gap and give them some familiarity. Um, and we've already got positive feedback from them, appreciating that opportunity. Um, some of them are substitutes in other districts as well, so they like to, they feel really connected with us. Um, and two of the three that were in that tour already picked up um assignments. And have picked up assignments on the academic as well as the shop side as well. Um, for athletics, I'd just like to recognize our um boys and girls soccer team. And our um cross-country teams for winning the Mayflower League um championships, uh conference championship. Um, the big feat, our athletics this season has done extremely well. Um, as far as, you know, wins and losses, you know, obviously sports is more than just the wins and losses piece. Um, but we want to celebrate and recognize those students for their hard work and dedication. Um, to winning their conference and, and accomplishing that um this past fall. Um, on the DEI side, a few things have happened over the past month. Obviously, what we um meeting with our C program, which, which just was mentioned. Um, this is our second go-around with C. And uh we're seeing growth as um last year we had two students sign up for C. And this year we've had thirty-nine students sign up for C. So it's a major, major, major improvement. Um, from that and as well as our faculty and staff members. So uh whereas last year we were operating somewhere around fourteen people um in total. Whereas this year we're going to be in the fifties. So it's a good problem to have. Um, we would try to figure out what that's going to look like and really merge into two groups. So that we have the student feedback, the faculty and staff feedback, all different positions and positionality's within the school. But also looking at how we can collaborate um as, as one, um, to do things and to make decisions. And to um to really, you know, look at the total student experience and how we can help improve that here at Southeastern. Um, other than that, that's pretty much where we are right now. Um, some of the stuff that we went over with the SRA as well as the principal search. Um, oh, and outstanding community member um awards for this month. This um tomorrow we'll be announcing four new outstanding community members. Um, this is total eight this, this year. Um, and that's has gone extremely positive. We had a lunch um with Superintendent McLannan. Um, the principal Guarini, um, and others that were there. Um, and that was just great feedback. And again, it's creating a good positive vibe throughout our entire um district. So. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Rob? Hey, thank you. So at this time, I move to go into executive session according to chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, paragraph eighty-three. Which is necessary to discuss strategy in respect to negotiations and litigation. Because an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And to not reconvene in open session to adjourn the meeting. Um, it will just be voting school committee members only, and we will take a three-minute break to aid with the transition. But we do need a vote before that happens.
We'll call a vote, Tony.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Kelsey.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Barbara.
Yes.
Jerison.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Robin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll see everybody in three minutes.
Only school committee members?
Just school, voting school committee members.